City Council Committee of the whole to order. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Milawambay.
As they would say in coming to America, I am very happy to be here.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Cherea. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Happy to be here.
Here. We got Mayor Ray.
Thank you very much. We're here, we do have a forum. At this point, we're going to turn to our distinguished city manager, Mr. Gleason, and he's going to give us whatever updates we have currently on COVID-19. Tim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Continue to keep in contact with Camille Rodriguez, the county administrator. Continues to share her appreciation for the site as a vaccination site. I think everybody's caught some of the media releases regarding the National Guard. I know Chairman McIntyre, State Representative Dan Brady, very involved in that. Still waiting for additional vaccines, but currently our seven-day rolling average positivity rate is under two and a half percent. And we have vaccinated nearly 50,000 in McLean County. And I think that we can ramp that up if we get more vacs, more vaccines, but that's it for now, Mayor.
Hey, are you muted?
Stand by a couple.
If you hold down the space where we can do it and I'll get IS.
Can everybody hear me now? Great, okay. This is a temporary fix, but we'll, we'll get this taken care of at this point. Madam Clerk, as I understand, we did not have any public comment. Anybody register or any public comments sent through email? Is that correct?
That is correct. There is no public comment emailed or anyone registered for speaking tonight.
Great. And we have, we don't, we don't have anything on our consent agenda, is that correct, Tim? Okay. And so we move next under item 6A. There's a presentation and discussion of the current design of the O'Neill Park Pool Project as requested by the Parks Recreation Cultural Arts Department. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Gleason, who then will eventually turn it over to Mr. Tetzloff and others who will give us a, a presentation. And then we have about a 20-minute council discussion afterwards. So, Mr. Gleason, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is truly an exciting night for the community. The O'Neill Pool has been something that's been discussed for several years. And it's something that honestly, we took advantage of COVID and knew it was going to be closed last year. And did the demo and we've got a blank canvas setting out there on the west side of our community that's ready for this very important next step. What's being presented tonight to council is not a staff recommendation, but it is the design that's been discussed for the last two, two and a half years. Obviously, we're looking for council input. But if council can come to some sort of agreement this evening and we get a thumbs up, we're all but ready to bring this back as an agenda item next Monday, the 22nd, or as late as April 12th, the first council meeting in April. Also want to share that this council, this body, that will change in large, you know, in large numbers here after the April 6th election. This was something that staff, Jay and his team, Williams Architect, wanted to bring back in front of this council. It's something that's been talked about and very excited about this possibility. Jay, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk through a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. So as the presentation's coming up, I want to thank the mayor, city council, city manager for allowing me this time to bring the O'Neill Park and Pool Project for your consideration. The first one, the city manager and I were talking about a month ago about all things that were going on in Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts. You know, he said, we should probably present this as an update to the city council. So that's kind of where I'm starting. Before I kind of even get to that, I'm going to use this pulpit, so to speak, as a way to say that we are hiring hundreds of seasonals for the summer and go to our cblm.org to apply. We are still looking for lots of seasonals. So, next slide, please. In Woodbirds Woods Park, we're completing an installation of a new playground, shade struck straight. Let me try that again, shade structure and a dream found. We also partnered with Luther Oaks and a donor. And this public-private partnership will add a new shelter and landscaping to the newly installed trail around the detention pond. Sweeney, we've hauled hundreds, well, tons of soil actually to change this. We used to be farmland into green space. And then in the 2022 budget, we do have proposed funding for some development of this area. But we wanted to make sure at the very least, we could start getting it ready for green space for that neighborhood to utilize. Evergreen Park has a project funded by CDPG and will be installing a new playground along with some inclusion pieces. As soon, it has been ordered, but we'll be, we'll get those installed as soon as they're delivered. Next slide, please. As you know, the Parks Department took over management of the grocery and motors arena. Next slide, Phil, please. This is currently being mostly done by BCPA staff and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been saved by managing internally. Although the management of the arena may only be for a temporary time, many hours of staff have been spent spent going through all the different contracts, cleaning, organizing the building. We'll have a contract with Ticketmaster soon that will combine ticketing for both BCPA and the arena. As Tim mentioned, COVID vaccinations are going on there at the arena now. And, you know, one of the things that we thought about too, and have worked out is, you know, the partnership between the arena and the Bloomington Ice Center is much easier to manage since we're doing it within the same department now. And we are working on a big potential hockey tournament coming to town during MLK weekend in '22. Could bring as many as 800 hotel rooms during that timeframe. We have utilized these buildings during the COVID, but we can't wait to put on the shows after this is all done. Next slide, please. For the zoo, construction's already restarted for the DeBrosa Monkey exhibit. It's looking like a June opening right now. South American exhibit is through an IDNR grant and a donation from the Miller Parks Geological Society. And we could break ground this year. It will also allow us to demolish three very old exhibits that really need to be demolished. And that's a 2022 opening. New logo and zoo rebrand is something that we're excited about. This work's been done internally. We have a new logo that will be unveiled in a few, probably in a few weeks. We're excited about it. We're also using this time to look at our mission, vision, values internally, but that's something that's exciting coming down the road. Next slide, please. Obviously, COVID is something like, you have to talk about with our department, the fact that we're able to pivot and change everything we've done. And that keeps going. One example is Holiday Pool this year we plan to have open, but it will not be a open swim like it's been the past year. You have to sign up and register ahead of time. So it's kind of just the, the heads up for our community. But, you know, we've had to adjust a lot of what we're doing through COVID. And sometimes we're, you know, in a matter of days, we have to make those changes. So I've got amazing staff who have been able to pivot really quickly and proud of that. Next slide, please. Tree City USA, we've just been awarded our 34th straight years of Tree City USA. Feel very proud about that. You know, park maintenance with forestry has had a rough couple of months with the storm that happened in January. We're now getting into the parks and cleaning up behind, after that storm, much like we do come March and April in most, most years. Next slide, please. So a new initiative that's being kind of rolled out today is the truly the opportunity that's out there. We've seen the success that Harmony Park has had, which is in Rolling Brook. And we're here to announce that we have a new initiative to build a west-side inclusive playground. We are looking at west-side locations right now. White Oak is probably the frontrunner, but we're also talking about this because last time it was almost completely privately raised. And we're looking to see if there's someone out in the community that would champion this, much like we had a group before, and raise the funds to build a west-side inclusive playground. Next slide, please. Now onto the main events. O'Neill, why don't we just go ahead and go to the next slide, Bill? This part of the presentation may look familiar to those who attended our virtual community meeting. We're, we're using that same template, taking one from Scott Rathbun, who showed you the budget presentation in same format. So we're kind of sticking with that. Wanted to point out here, just in case people didn't know, this is a park on the west side, only about two blocks from, from Market. Next slide, please. Some history behind this project. So feasibility study was completed in 2017, which included a neighborhood meeting, which was, I think, well-attended. It was combined with the Parks Comprehensive Master Plan that the council adopted a few years ago. You know, this was meant and is the starting point for everything we're doing and talking about today, using those ideas that were brought up and really dive in a little deeper in, in what we're doing. So, next slide, please. So the engagement that we had, we were, we were pleased with. I think we always want to have more, but we were pleased with about 1,000 responses. We really focused around the O'Neill Park neighborhood, which is in Ward 7. Apologize for the mistake in the memo, it's Ward 7. Here, we thought it was important to point out where the responses came from. About 75% coming from Bloomington residents. And also, as you can see here, the lazy river was the highest pool amenity that was, that was wanted or ranked. And, but everything else is pretty close in the weighted ranking. So I just wanted to kind of point the community engagement piece out. Next slide, please. Here, just wanted to show some of the comments that we've pulled out or that we heard multiple times. We tried to stay true to these comments that we were hearing from the community. Really want to give everybody a chance to reach through some of these. So it kind of gives me a chance to, you know, talk about how we feel like this, what we're going to show is a vision that the community has had for this pool and park. Really feels the rejuvenation of this park. This problem, this project we're talking about tonight is really the first step in that. And some of these minutes that you're going to see are, are for the future, but not part of this phase of the project. An example of this, as in terms of future amenities, is, for example, addition of a dog park. Next slide, please. What we're showing tonight is a staff-preferred project. The amenities of this project are the new pool, expanded skate park and parking. We're here to ask the city council for feedback, as the city manager said. We did hire a fantastic team to help us through this project. I think it's one of the best teams we could have hired possibly, certainly in the Midwest, if not the country. And now I want to hand off to Andrew Caputo. Andrew is an associate principal from Williams Architects and he is the project manager for this endeavor. Go ahead, take it away, Andrew.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jay and, and mayor and city manager, council members and residents. We, we are very appreciative and thank you for the invitation to be here tonight to present our, our master plan and schematic design phase. It's been our pleasure working with staff since January to develop this design that will take you through here for the next few minutes. Our team is primarily architects, but we do engage engineers to assist us with the design process. And we've engaged three firms that we've worked with in the past before on many projects like this. And so we have a landscape architect, Hitchcock Design Group, a civil engineer, Erickson Engineering Associates, and an aquatic engineer, Councilman Hunsaker. And these team members have assisted us in the master plan effort. Next slide. Project schedule. This identifies our scope of work for the first phase of the project for dividing it into four categories that we typically talk about in architecture and construction. We have the design phase. Of course, that's the phase we're in now. As I mentioned, we began that phase in November and we look to complete that at the end of spring and June. Then we have a bidding and negotiation phase that coincides with permitting. A swimming pool needs to be permitted through the state of Illinois and also through the city of Bloomington and any other applicable county requirements. We'll go through that process of bidding in the middle of summer, from July until August. That process is typically about two months or so. After bids are received, the contract will be awarded shortly thereafter. And construction was scheduled to start in September. The first thing that will happen will be to finish some of the demolition activities. We know the original pool has already been removed and that area graded, but there's other amenities on the site that need to be removed. And that would kick us off after that's done for our construction. And construction would continue on through the winter and into the spring so that the pool can be ready for the grand opening on Memorial Day 2022. This type of construction process for an outdoor pool over the winter is fairly typical. It's a schedule that we've been through with, with many cities and park districts throughout Illinois. When things do get cold in the winter, in, in the months of January, things can kind of slow down. And typically, we work with the general contractor, so their activities are aggressive in the fall. And then after things start to warm up and thaw out, they, they return to that aggressive nature to get the schedule completed. Next slide. All right, so the next part of our presentation, I'm going to take you through some of our drawings. And you're going to see first here, starting, we have an overall drawing of the park. And then as we go on, we have an enlarged drawing of the pool zone and then of the skate park. You'll be able to see the detail a little bit better as we go for the focused elements. But to start off the presentation broadly speaking here, this is our current design for O'Neill Park. And it's, it's an exciting concept and we've incorporated a lot of different amenities here into this design. First and foremost are the existing amenities, those amenities that are part of the park that are to remain. And you can see those in the, the center of the drawing, the existing ball field, softball field, and the existing buildings that are adjacent to the ball field. Those are a primary site element that will remain on this project. We also have the existing parking, the linear parking that's located to the northwest of the site. That, that parking lot will also remain as well. One of the interesting things that we've had to deal with on this project is an existing easement that runs on an angle through the property just south of the ball fields. And so we've had to be careful not to locate any proposed new elements over top of that easement. And that provided the framework of the constraints for what we were dealing with. So for this project and for the amenities, we worked with staff as directed to include these amenities in the project. And a lot of our work in the last few months has been discussing with staff, what is the optimal location and functionality and relationship between all of these amenities? And so we've settled in on this plan nicely here, which we'll discuss in detail here as we go. And the major amenities in this first phase of the project that we'll look at, that we'll be talking about in detail tonight are the pool itself. And the pool will be located in the southwest corner of the park on the site where the old pool was located, except the new pool will be larger. The new pool will include a lap pool, an activity pool, a lazy river, a plunge pool and tower and water slides. On the next slide, when we go there, you'll see that detail in a moment a little better. It'll have a new couple of buildings associated with it that you can see that are in orange on the drawing. We have a bath house that's split into two little buildings and then a filter building and a community room that's attached to the bath house. In, towards the south, in the middle there, you'll see the parking lot. The parking lot is actually, for economy, been located in the same location that the existing parking lot is, but it's being expanded and improved and repaved. So when the project is all done, it'll feel like a new parking lot. But we've located that, again, for some economy there to utilize some of that existing grading and base. And, and that was a good location for adjacency to the pool and all the other site elements. We have to include stormwater detention for this project. In the middle of our site is the lowest part where we found that it would be a great place to include some stormwater detention in the middle of the site that is just north of the pool zone and just south of the softball field and the new batting cage. That detention area will actually be a multi-use facility. So we'll design it to be a very shallow detention facility that will be able to be molded. So when it's dry, it can be programmed and actually used. And then certainly in, when it's wet and maybe in the spring, when it's, you know, more frequent rains and it's a little bit muddy, you know, there can be activities planned to stay off the turf elsewhere in the park. But during the summer, when things start to dry up, that'll be a nice multi-use space in the middle of the park. We also have a splash pad element, which is adjacent to the pool. And we'll talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. But before we go to the next slide, let me conclude this page by talking about some of the future amenities. Now, this was a important part of this whole process because this is a long-term master plan. And it doesn't just include what's planned or budgeted in this particular phase, but actually what can happen in the future to develop this park. And this was a very exciting part of this project for all of us on the team. Well, there's a few ways that we planned where the pool itself can be enhanced in the future and things and elements inside the pool can be expanded and enhanced. And you'll see a, a couple of those at the, at the beginning there, the bullet points. We'll be designing a water slide and a water slide tower that can be expanded. And additional water slides can be added to the plunge pool and along the deck as funding might permit in the future. We also are including in the design as part of the lazy river, a center area that will be landscaped at this time. But in the future, that adventure island area that we call it in the river can actually be developed into an amenity. Design a future bridge for that and some steps and accessible ramps. Get folks onto the island and actually design the island with some features that provide another destination. Also, we'll need some underground stormwater for future development underneath one of the future sport courts. Jay mentioned the dog park a little bit ago, that's located to the north on the drawing. We've split the dog park into three different zones so that the turf areas can be rotated to try to, you know, keep the grass alive, obviously, because it's, you know, well-traveled by folks and, and their dog. We have a new batting cage planned in the middle. You can see that element in between the ball field and the softball field. We have pickleball, tennis and basketball courts. These are located to the right or to the east of that parking lot expansion. We have some shelters planned on various locations around the park as part of the enhancement. And then a new nature adventure playground that is just north of the courts. The last element to mention that's part of this project is just to the top right of the parking lot is the skate park. And the skate park is included in this first phase of the project. And it has a nice adjacency to the parking lot there being part of this first phase. Next slide, please. All right. We're going to take a closer look at the pool zone here and be able to discuss with you these particular site elements in more detail. And you'll be able, obviously, to follow along here a little closer because we're zoomed in on the drawing and you can see those a little better now. I had mentioned before, you can see the, the dashed angled red lines that run between the spray park, which is shown in blue at the top of the drawing, and then the activity pool in the middle of the drawing. And those dashed lines that run through the site, that's that easement that I mentioned. There's two underground storm sewers along there. And we had to be careful, we can pave over top of that easement. We can pour concrete, put fencing, but we cannot place a building or a pool. And so we've been careful to avoid that easement in this particular design. So you can see that element clearly in this drawing here, that's, that's element D. So let's talk about the pool zone here, and then we can circle back and talk about the spray park. So there's a new entrance area off the parking lot at the northwest corner of the lot. You can see that curving shape there, that's a, a drop-off, a pickup area that provides a lot of generous space for folks to pull up and get out of the way of traffic and provide a safe way for, for kids to enter and exit vehicles. From that new entry plaza, you have not only access to the pool zone, but as you can see by the different trails that lead away from that entry plaza node, we have access to the ball fields, to the other fields across on the other side of the parking lot, up to the other parking lot and the dog park and the spray park. So we have a nice central area there in the park that we're calling the entry plaza. From that plaza to enter the pool zone, you would walk right into the facility, right through the bath house. There's a, there's a center courtyard that you could see with some of the pavement, scorelines drawn, that takes you right in between the two buildings. So there'll be a wonderful view when you are exiting a vehicle and accessing the park. You'll be able to see that activity pool right through the bath house there. There'll be an admissions section for you. You'll be able to pass through the, the locker rooms if you'd like to enter the pool zone that way as well. So let's talk about the pool itself. So you can see the major pool elements in the drawing here. One of the first ones that I'd like to talk about is the lap pool. It was ideal to plan a lap pool separately from the rest of the facility because the lap pool can be programmed separately. And it can have separate events that are not necessarily happening at the activity pool or in other areas of the park. The lap pool can host learn to swim. It can host competitive events and clubs. It can host adult and seniors programs, or it can just be used for general recreation. But we can include a, a little gate that separates the lap pool from the rest of the facility for those events. The lap pool is designed so that it has a shallow end and then a deep end. The deep end will accommodate one meter diving in the base bid project, that's this phase. However, staff has asked us to actually design the depth of the pool to accommodate a future three-meter board. So in other words, the clearances for diving will all be such that in the future, all that really needs to be done is the addition of the diving board. There would not need to be any modifications to the pool. Moving from the lap pool east, you can see the, the center pool is the largest body of water, that's the activity pool. This is a general-purpose pool for use for all age groups. It's our primary recreation focus of the facility. It starts with that fan shape, which is a zero-depth entry. And the depth of the pool gets a little bit deeper, but it's very shallow and it gets slowly deeper as you descend south into the pool. In the middle of the pool there, you'll see some half-circles there. We have some bench seedings and a vortex there. And then that pool actually merges into the lazy river. The lazy river is about three to three and a half feet deep. It'll have a current running through it that's created by a pump with jets in the, in the wall of the pool. The lazy river is a fun thing because there, there aren't any other lazy rivers in the community or near the community that are public. So this will be a unique feature that O'Neill Park can offer. Folks will be able to enjoy the lazy river, river either riding in an inner tube. They'll also be able to walk with or against the current. Also, the lazy river can be used for exercise, for walking against the current, also for exercise program. It's a, it's a nice feature to have and it's also one that'll have a, some wave action and some features that are included with it, some experiences as you go around the river that we'll talk more about in a moment. The other body of water that you could see in the bottom left corner is the plunge pool. This is the smallest pool that we have. The plunge pool is about three or three and a half feet deep. It's a small square pool and it receives the slides. When the slides are off, the plunge pool can also be used for learn to swim lessons. Um, when the slides are off, the plunge pool can also be used for learn-to-swim lessons because it's at a nice ideal depth, uh about thirty feet square. Um, you can see in orange uh working our way west of the plunge pool is the slide tower. The slide tower is um, it, it really depends uh when we later get into more detail and design the slides. But typically, the slide tower might be twenty-five to thirty feet high. Uh, it's usually a steel or concrete structure. In the base project, we have uh the first water slide that's shown in orange. As I mentioned, though, uh the previous slide, we are designing this facility to be expanded in the future. So you'll see another slide there in white. That would be, would be a future slide that could be added to the tower. And then would also exit to the plunge pool. And then uh, in a, a linear slide along the bottom of the drawing there is, is called a runout speed slide. And it does not um stop at a pool. Um, it has a, a long, flat exit that you basically just slow down to zero. Um, that type of slide is usually called a speed slide because it's the steepest descent and there's usually no loops in that slide. It's another fun uh ride experience uh that, that we have um included in the, in the project. Uh, you see some shade structures, some umbrellas. We, we've, we've shown some chase lounges. We have generous deck space and some lawn areas, landscape areas in the pool zone. Um, the concession area is located at the top at the north of the bath house. You see a circular concession seating area there that uh is off the pool deck. Uh, that's very convenient located. Um, and then the last thing I'd like to talk about on this slide is that spray park element. Um, this is an important um uh element because one of the things that was very important uh to staff was this idea of inclusion. And the space uh, the, the spray park provides that um uh aspect of design. We can provide uh play features that are um fun and interactive for all different ages and abilities or disabilities and, and all different groups um in that particular zone. One of the unique things about it is the way that we're designing this facility is that the spray park will be open from the pool zone when the pool is open. So in other words, you can come into admissions and you can enjoy all the features. And then you can walk through the gate at the zero-depth entry and into the spray park and, and back and forth as you wish. Um, however, in the spring and fall, when it's a little bit too cold for the pool to be open. The spray park will be open from the park side. So from the uh, from the gray asphalt trail at the top of the drawing there that you can see, uh you'll be able to access the spray park. And we will just at that time lock the gate between the spray park and the zero-depth entry. So no one can walk onto the pool zone. Uh, that's a nice feature to have because uh then the spray park is really widely available. And it will have its own uh water filtration and circulation systems that are not shared with the pool. So it'll operate entirely separately. Uh, next slide, please. So we're gonna just take you through a few uh photos of some other projects that we've designed to just show you these key elements and what you might expect for this facility. And we'll just provide some thoughts as we go through these photos, um just some talking points here as we think about these design elements. So this first uh amenity here is the twenty-five yard lap pool. This is a, a similar facility. You could see here that uh this, this particular design uh has shallow water at the top of the drawing, which deepens um towards the foreground uh and our pool will, will be similar. Um, you can see the uh, the ladder uh access to the pool. Uh, this particular example had a drop side, but what we're planning for is the uh one-meter diving boards and future three-meter boards. Next slide, please. Um, diving boards, uh I mentioned the, the diving facility. Uh, this is another nice thing um to be providing at O'Neill Park because um there isn't a similar diving facility that's nearby in the community. So like the lazy river, the opportunity for diving is um a nice, fun element. That's something different and unique about O'Neill Park. We've been um considering different depths for the pool, as I mentioned. Um, the minimum depth for the pool will be thirteen feet deep, which, which is the minimum depth for the future three-meter diving. Next slide, please. The zero-depth entry, I mentioned this before. This is the curving north edge of the activity pool. Uh, this is a very important element. Um, the zero-depth entry of the activity pool makes the major focus of the facility, which is the activity pool very, very easy to enter and enjoy. So uh as you can see from these two examples, one uh from inside the pool looking at zero edge and the other one from at the zero edge looking into the pool. Um, uh, this facility that we're designing for you would be much like what you see here. Um, so that zero edge is um oftentimes utilized as just a wonderful place for um sunbathing and for young kids to play who are not comfortable yet in deep water. And we um will be introducing some features that we're gonna talk about here uh as we go in that activity pool. You can see some of those features in the lower picture to the right. Next slide. Ground spray features. So this is uh one of those features that we'd like to include uh in the activity pool. Um, some of these are, are done in different ways, uh different ways to pipe these and include them. Some of them are, are taller uh features, so like you see in the top-left or the right photo that have various uh sprays or dumping buckets or bubblers or shooters, things that um provide a fun activity for a little bit older kids. Uh, then we have um in-ground sprays that are actually in the floor of the pool. Uh, these are nozzles that can be adjusted to provide different spray patterns. Uh, the middle photo is, is uh one of those ground spray features. And then we uh like to incorporate some sprays along the pool deck that shoot over the gutter. Uh, all of these will be separately controlled so they can be turned on and off. Next slide. Uh, the spray ground, uh this uh shows you uh some ideas for the spray ground. And we'll be working with staff as we continue the design phase to design the detail of the spray ground. Um, and select the particular features. Um, but these are just two examples that I to show you, and I mentioned the importance of inclusion. Um, and the idea that there are features here that apply to children of all ages and abilities. Um, you can introduce a lot of color, uh if uh you can introduce theming if you like to. And uh this type of uh uh facility is typically a concrete floor that is slightly bowl-shaped. So the water continuously drains to the main drains of the center. Um, typically, a spray ground does not hold water like the activity pool does. But it recirculates and, and cleans the water. The filtration system still cleans the water, just like a pool. Uh, next slide. A small play feature, climbing structure. Uh, we'd like to think about including one of these uh with you. Staff has asked us to consider this in the activity pool um where the water is, is shallow. Um, these are uh uh fun activities. They can be used as forts. They typically have a small slide, some water cannons, some interactive valves and, and buttons where kids can actively engage uh turning on and off the water features in various areas on the structure. Uh, these, these typically can provide the hours of, of play. Next slide. Accessible points of entry. Uh, this is a very important aspect to the um two thousand ten ADA and the Illinois Accessibility Code. Um, we need to design all of our pools so that they are accessible and follow uh code compliance for accessible, accessibility in persons with disabilities. Uh, these two photos just show you some examples. Um, there'll be various methods employed for the different pools. Uh, some of those methods include pool stairs, um shallow step-in entries, uh sloped entry ramps with handrails. There are pool lifts and uh transfer stations are also two other methods. Next slide, please. Here's some um additional amenities in the activity pool, some water floatables um that are typically themed. Uh, they are very fun climbing structures. Uh, some of them also include some uh sprays or bubblers with them. And some kiddie water slides are always uh desirable features to have in shallow water. Next slide. These are two photos of a, uh two lazy rivers. Uh, these are all, are similar in size to the ones that uh we're looking at for your facility. It will be about uh three hundred and twenty-five lineal feet. These photos uh show a little bit about what I was talking about where um kids in this photo are enjoying the river, uh riding it on some inner tubes. Um, but as I mentioned, uh you'll be able to also walk in the pool and can also use this pool for exercise programming to walk against the current. Um, you can see in the photo on the right, uh there's some spray features. They're turned off in the photo, but those yellow spray features um can be activated and turned on and uh provide some other um surprise elements to enjoying the river. So we'll be looking at designing those elements with staff as well. The photo uh in the left, before we go to the next slide, I have some development in the island. And there's a little shade structure there and some palm trees. Um, as I mentioned, in the base project, we'll have a perimeter pool deck just for guarding. And then the center area will be landscaped, but the public would not necessarily be invited onto the island yet. Um, however, in the future, we'll design some piping stubbed underneath the river to the island so that additional features can be added and that um island feature can be turned and made into an adventure island in the future. And you might add some features or a wet deck, um additional sunbathing areas or maybe a shade structure. Some other um uh things there that you could do as a, a future um redevelopment. Next slide. A vortex and bench seating. We have these uh elements at the neck, the center portion of the activity pool where the activity pool is at its deepest, which is about three or three and a half feet wide. Uh, we'll have some built-in bench seating. Um, those are, can be enjoyed, enjoyed by adults or children. And uh the vortex uh feature is uh adds some jets into the walls. Um, similar to the lazy river that adds some current and bubblers uh as part of that curve shape. Uh, it creates um a little bit more robust current than what you see in the river. Next slide. Uh, these are the tall water slides, the major water slide elements. We're just showing you some examples here of the ones that um we've been asked to include for your facility. Uh, the two on the left are body flume slides. Uh, you could see the loops. Um, the blue one is an open slide and the orange one is a closed one. So again, we'll have one of these slides in the base project and then the second slide will be able to be added in the future. The center slide is a runout slide. So you can see um what I was early describing earlier where that slide has a long, flat, extended exit. Uh, which uh has a water depth of about three or four inches. So instead of exiting into the um plunge pool, you actually exit into what's called a runout. Um, the photo on the right is just another example of a body flume slide. Uh, we've got some shade structure shown on the tower there for the guards. Uh, that's a nice feature to have as well. Um, usually, we can accommodate some storage underneath the, the tower with some fencing for the inner tubes. Next slide. Uh, the last photo here that we'll look at for the pool zone is some interior shots of a similar facility that we've designed for the bath house. Um, so the most important aspect of the bath house is customer service. We'll design this facility to keep the um inviting nature of the whole complex in mind. We want the uh experience of the bath house to be one of quality and durability and ease of maintenance. So we'll be uh designing the bath house with uh quality materials. On the left is a photo of a locker room. Um, on the center, one important aspect of the design for the bath house will be to include dedicated family change rooms. So these will be single-user washrooms that each include a water closet, a lav, and a shower that can be locked. Uh, so a single person can go in there or a family can go in there and have uh complete privacy that's separate from the main locker room area. And then the photo on the right is just an example of an interior of a concession operation um for snacks. Next slide. All right, the last um site plan image that we wanted to show you, and we have one more photo after this uh before I turn things back over to Jay. Uh, this is a uh enlarged view uh towards the right, towards the east of the parking lot on our site. And in gray there, you can see the, that's element L. That's the new skate park. So this was an exciting feature that we're planning as part of this project again. And you can see that its adjacency to the parking lot is, is very convenient there, being that it's part of the first phase. We have um also planned, as I mentioned, but now you can see a little better because we're zoomed in on the drawing. You can see the future amenities around the skate park and how they're planned to lay out. Um, so we have a little detention area that would be underground south of the skate park that's shown with a dashed hidden line. That's element Gigi. Um, then we have a pickleball and, and tennis courts. To the right of the skate park is a basketball court. And then to the northeast is a new nature-based playground. And um that's just actually south of that um ball field, you know, the, the, the main ball field. Next slide. So this last photo is a photo of a skate park uh that's similar in area. Um, and what are, what you might be looking at for some of the amenities that uh are to be included in your facility. Um, similar to the splash pad, uh the skate park will have elements for riders of all different ages and abilities. So you'll see bowls and ramps and parapets and steps and railings and uh different pavements, steepness and surfaces um that we're going to be working with staff to include in your project. Next slide. Next steps. Well, thank you very much, and I will turn things back over to Jay.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Um, as we go through this, you know, this is the uh staff preferred concept and we're looking for feedback. But uh for that, uh Tim, do you have any comments at this time you'd like to add?
Yeah, I do, very briefly, and then we'll get this over to uh the elected officials for comment. Again, this is uh, you know, culmination of uh three-plus years of uh work. And uh this is a, a product uh that is very similar to what has been uh discussed uh you know, before council and the community uh and some of the other sessions that we've had during this de- design phase. Uh, the original price tag that we were talking about uh was about ten and a half million dollars. Uh, now that uh dollar amount is somewhere in the range of eleven and a half, eleven point seven million dollars. Uh, there's a buffer there uh that uh if we tightly manage this, uh you know, we could reduce that cost some. But what we wanted to do is not take away from what had been discussed uh in the community. Obviously, that can be trimmed and uh staff would be prepared to uh discuss the different components that can be reduced. I think what we've heard from the community and, and from the council in the past, I definitely feel this way as well. Uh, Bloomington deserves this. Uh, this neighborhood deserves this. Uh, while we know it's a uh destination, it will be for those that live outside of the community. Uh, it's uh, it's really being built for this community. And some of the decisions, you know, if we, if we build what's been presented or something very close to. I know that we talked about components of this uh would be open after pool hours. You know, that's, that's an attempt to try to capture some revenue to uh pay this back. But that doesn't mean it has to be that way at the end of the day. If uh there are certain pieces that you want always to be open to anybody in that neighborhood or our community to come and enjoy that. That's something that we can do. Just staff have been very conscientious about the cost and uh trying to uh recapture uh something that, some of that payment. Something else, uh while we haven't talked the numbers, uh you can, you can believe that uh that's something that behind the scenes, I'm very involved in. And when you're looking at about eleven and a half million dollar bond uh to uh build this. Uh, I am confident that uh this would be low uh or no-cost uh impact to our residents. So we're not looking at some uh moderate to high-priced additional uh revenue stream in order to pay for this amenity for the community. I'm confident of that. Or else we wouldn't have even brought this before council to present it tonight if I did not feel that we have uh again, lower no-cost uh opportunities to uh pay for an amenity like this. I think everybody will remember two years ago, uh next month, when we did the uh newly-elected orientation. Uh, our former police chief, Clay Wheeler, uh some of the comments that he had about O'Neill uh pool and park and how important it was to the uh community in that neighborhood. So very excited. I'm, I'm gonna kick this back to Jay. I think he has some additional comments, but we're gonna So very excited. I'm going to kick this back to Jay. I think he has some additional comments, but we're going to get this into the hands of the elected officials. And look forward to taking notes on your comments. Again, if we get a thumbs up, this could be on the council agenda for next week. And at the very least, targeting April 12th so that we can meet the timeline that Jay and Andrew just had mentioned in the presentation. So with that said, back to you, Jay. Thank you.
Very much. So a few things just to point out and kind of conclude. I know we're running just a little bit long. You know, one of the things, as as a city manager talked about the police, you know, this is about public safety. We teach people how to swim. Not just kids, but we teach people how to swim. That's a life skill that people need. The other big thing I wanted to point out was that Holiday Pool is approximately the same age as O'Neill underground. So there's only a matter of time before Holiday would fail. And so there's a chance that this at some point in our future could be our only pool in Bloomington. So I wanted to kind of point that out. We also believe that there's some economic development on the west side, this being only a few blocks from from Market Street and all the restaurants that are there. So I feel like I need to pass that along, but you know, as we wrap this up for questions, you know, we're excited about this opportunity to rejuvenate O'Neill Park and Pool and look forward to your questions. Hand it back over to the mayor.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate this. And as Mr. Gleason had said, this is definitely the culmination of many, many, many efforts over at least three years. We very much appreciate all of what you've done. I want to thank you, Jay, Mr. Caputo, and Tim, Billy, and other staff that have worked to make this this possibility, at least putting all this together for us to discuss. And I totally agree with Mr. Gleason. Our city, our great city deserves this. It's been a long time in coming. This community, this neighborhood deserves this. This is not just a an asset for the neighborhood in Bloomington, but in our broader community. It's also something that much of the research certainly shows us, if you if you don't have immunities, amenities, excuse me, like this in, let's say, neighborhoods that are older, underperforming neighborhoods, then you help invite people, especially teenagers and young people, to get into mischief or trouble in summers. If you've got activities for people to get involved with, and frankly, also summer jobs for them to understand the value of work and begin to be integrated, not just into the community, but in the workforce, this has so many opportunities and given its proximity to the interstates, this has some economic development prospects, as has been noted, the only lazy river and many other amenities that you don't find in our region. So I very much thank you for all your efforts here. And at this point, I want to see what, go to our elected officials, our council members, council member Painter. I see you first. Go ahead, Johnny.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. I know it's been a long time coming and you've worked really hard on this. My major concern is the price for the kids on the west side. Currently, the the pool pass for the whole summer is quite inexpensive. And with all of this, it would cost a lot more. So is there some way that we could give the kids within, you know, a certain radius of the park scholarships or reduced rates or something like that? Because what I would hate more than anything is for the kids in the neighborhood to be on the outside looking in and they can't afford to go to this wonderful amenity. So how can we deal with that?
By the way, thank you, Councilmember Painter. That is an excellent question, and it would be, we'd all be remiss if we developed something like this and the immediate people around the pool couldn't afford to go. Thank you. Jay, you want to start with that or Mr. Gleason? Jay?
Okay, so we do offer scholarships. That's something we've we've done in much of our programming. We've done that for years. You know, we don't know how much we are going to look at for an admission or a pool pass because we don't know how much what we're doing from a construction perspective yet. But those scholarships are out there. We encourage people to look at those. We encourage people to donate to that scholarship fund because we go until that money runs out. But you know, it's something we've looked at. We don't want to have a amenity like this that is overpriced or out of people's opportunities.
Okay, do you ever do fundraisers or anything to raise money for this kind of thing, like you do for the zoo?
It's something we have talked about trying to increase. One example is the Turkey Trot, which is a free event. And utilize maybe those donations for the scholarships. We've done little things, but nothing as grand as probably as we'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I see Councilmember Bray Emig in Crayville. Kim?
Mayor, and thank you so much for this this presentation and for all the work that's gone into this because as I see all this on the page, it just reflects all the conversations we've had starting back in 2017. I'm sure those prior to 2017 had their inputs as well. So Jay, thank you. Andrew, thank you for this work. Understanding that we'll have some discussion now and I'm anxious to hear what my colleagues have to say about this. Because I feel like, again, in the four years that I've been on council, I've had an opportunity to to give some inputs and and I see those those great concepts on the page. But just a couple of questions. Talked about the fact that the softball diamonds, the ball fields will remain. Is part of the project also revamping or refurbishing those items or would they stay in current state?
So I can tell you that, you know, we will create a list as we need to get out of winter and start going through. I've already warned Bobby Mays, who's our park superintendent, that there's going to be a list of current ball fields and how we want to upgrade those. A lot of painting, some fence repair, so that when we build this incredible pool area, basically this other the south part of the park, that everything still looks good, even though we're not spending a great deal of money on the two ball fields now. We still want to make sure they look nice and don't look like they weren't brand new.
Thank you. That I think that would match nicely, of course. But I also have a question about the diving board proposal. It was made mentioned that there aren't a lot of diving boards in parks these days and with with some of the the work that I do, I I know that diving boards can cause injury and I wonder, is that the driving force? And have we evaluated the wisdom of including diving boards, you know, based on numbers of injuries and the like? Jay or Andrew?
I I think I'll I'll answer briefly and then I'll hand it to Andrew. So you know, Neil had had diving boards and had them up till the end and it was one of the things that people went to O'Neill for. But from a diving boards kind of going away from pools in general, kind of let Andrew answer that one since that's more of a general question.
Thanks, Jay. I would say that most of the time where we might see diving boards be eliminated, it's primarily due to cost. There are expensive pools to build because of the excavation and the depth and the structural concrete that's required for the pool walls. I certainly must say that any pool that you have, you certainly have the opportunity for injury. And deep water that is not does not have code compliance depth is certainly hazardous. And so there are stringent requirements from the state of Illinois that we must follow in designing the pool. With that being said, we could never, nor could anyone, design a swimming pool that would be injury-proof. So there could always be an incident that would result in an injury. And so part of the safety of the pool is the operations and the guarding and the you know, protection of the users that are actually you know, in the water or diving, you know, from the boards.
Thank you, thank you for the input. And my final question for now relates to, or maybe it's question and input relates to the bathhouse. And I saw the broken out family suites with the locks and the like. And I think I, as I look at a project like that, the project as a whole, if we're looking to watch our costs, I would be in favor of keeping in the amenities for the children and for families for the play areas and cutting back on the bath area. Just experience as a mom and as, you know, community member, a lot of folks just like to pack their bag and head out and not necessarily do the whole shower at the gym anymore or at the pool. And so and the idea of separate suites, that sounds expensive to me. If we do maintain a shower room, I prefer the locker room concept, maybe with some, you know, maybe there could be some groupings for families, but I don't, this locking thing, you know, we will have kids there who like to lock doors and we don't want. So I don't know, I just I just look at that concept and I think it looks expensive and maybe not necessary. Jay or Andrew, thoughts on the separate locking suites?
Jay?
Again, I'll kind of answer and then I'll kind of pass it to Andrew. You know, our thought was for those who have who are going to change at the room or at the pool, who it's a father with a ten-year-old daughter. Or flip that around, a mother with a ten-year-old boy. Those are the kind of the ideas we're thinking about. And I'll let Andrew as a kind of a answer the rest of that.
Yeah, so we have to comply with the state swimming pool code first and foremost in designing the bathhouse. And so the traditional dedicated men's and women's locker rooms are required for any facility that that we design. And so we we have those as part of this project, but we have talked about with staff, some of the very things that you're asking us about and the size of the bathhouse and the size of the locker areas has decreased in recent decades for the reasons that you say, and that is that well, most people actually shower at home. We still have to provide the code require showers, but we've worked with staff to try to design the bathhouses in such a way that it's very economical and is not oversized. So we do have a dedicated men's and women's washroom to comply with the state code. But it's very efficiently designed and has the exact number of fixtures and no more that what's required for this facility. We've also, we've also, excuse me, talked about possibly even locating the lockers in a bank along the pool deck to save save some of the interior space that's usually built for a large locker room. The dedicated family change rooms that I mentioned, there's only two of those that we're planning. The family change rooms are they're almost universally liked, I would say, by all the time, all the clients that we've included those for. They will have emergency safety releases so a guard can, you know, if a kid has locked themselves in there, they will be able to be rescued. And, you know, the lock mechanism will be able to be overrode. But you know, yes, there's there's certainly a cost to to build those two extra family washrooms, but we do find that they are are well-used and because anyone can use them, they have a nice ability, again, to just you know, provide that other level of of customer service. You know, obviously, whether we actually have those in the design or not is, you know, up to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate that. Again, in order that I've seen with Councilmember Emig, Crayville, Milowambe, and then Matthew. Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for this presentation, Andrew and Jay. I wish that former Alderman Scott Black were here to imagine a ride down the lazy river. I so I I'm really impressed at the efforts you've made to get community input and your emphasis on accessibility and your your care to identify those features that will be unique to this facility. So I have two comments, and the first one is in reference to to one source of input that you received in an earlier slide about ensuring that we have transgender or gender gender-neutral accessibility. So I just want to reiterate that that design should be part of the whole. And my second comment is about landscaping, that we have amazing gardening experts, herb guilds, resources in the community and just really ensuring that we can get pollinators and and local native plants and all of that great green stuff. So so those are my my comments and a question about the the gender, you know, accessibility. Thank you.
Andrew or Jay, want to address the gender accessibility?
I would say the family restrooms will kind of solve that, that those rooms could be utilized for not just families.
Got you. Thank you very much. Does that answer your question, Julie? You good?
Yes, I do appreciate it. And I also appreciate older person Johnny Painter's comment about affordability, you know, and just seeking options and a potentially even a membership sliding scale model would be really important to me, too.
Great. Thank you very much. And just by the way, I did see Councilmember Black yesterday and he knows that we're talking about this. I'm guessing he's probably even watching us now. So we'll definitely have to be sure that that he gets invited to the the ribbon cutting. At this point, let's see, Councilmember Crayville, I'm sorry, Jeff, you're next.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, and I I want to thank you also, it's Jay and to Andrew for for this presentation and the work that you you've all done. And it's one of the another one of those things that feels like it's come to fruition and we never thought we would be at this point. You know, but we are. So that's great. Have we have we gotten any type of a breakdown of of cost? Meaning that, you know, if we're deciding, hey, you know, this is too much money or how can we cut costs? It's hard to do with without knowing that, hey, the lazy river is going to throw another million dollars on this is the, you know, this type of thing.
Hey, actually, Alderman Crayville, we do, I didn't want to provide a menu. You know, I didn't know if in this discussion we would want to start carving out different items, but that's definitely something as a follow-up that we can provide to everyone.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. And just because, I mean, there could be something where we say, hey, maybe we should cut this, but it doesn't cost that much money. You're not saving that much, but something else maybe would save you more money. On Alderwoman Painter's comment, I'm just thinking, do we charge, you know, members outside the community that come in a higher rate or something like that? You know, maybe that would would help with with the cost. I'm glad we're looking at the accessibility issues. Couple of specific questions. So I, a number of people in the community and when we had the earlier presentation and public input talked about, well, why can't we have the splash pad open to the public, you know, beyond just people in the pool when the pool's open, right? So so that, you know, potentially maybe the pool's full or maybe something, maybe somebody could not afford, you know, that particular day to to get into the pool.
It's actually another one that, you know, maybe my comments earlier didn't really address this, but that's something that we've heard loud clear from this council and from the community is we want this to be a an amenity for the neighborhood. And there are many different options that we can take once we get to a final product or a final decision. And that splash pad, I think Andrew's the one that commented to that where it could be fenced off and unlocked after the hours of operation for the pool. It can be unlocked all the time. It just needs to be known that we're going to lose a certain portion of revenue, but at the end of the day, the revenue may not be great enough to provide an amenity to the neighborhood and the community. So there's a lot before council. It's just how much how much loss of revenue capturing does council have an appetite for? And I definitely heard that from you guys. So we've got options.
Okay, sorry, Mayor, I didn't know if you were going to say something. I just had one more question. So I wanted to find out.
I'm sorry, just the only one thing I want to say with respect to your point before we move on, it's just, it's pretty common, including It's pretty common, including uh normal Fairview unless they've changed their policy. If you're a a taxpayer of the municipality. Your your general entry rate is higher than if you're not a taxpayer for the municipality. Pretty, I mean, that's pretty standard practice. E- e- even before you begin to maybe have scholarships or reductions or something, but thank you for that.
Thanks, Mayor. I and and on the amenities, um some were concerned also about. Are we going to have to tear up the basketball courts and maybe wait until a future year to put them back in? And then um just wondered why the skate park was kind of what decided to be put in at the beginning versus maybe at a later time.
Well, I can answer that. So to, the skate park will be displaced by the larger parking lot. The skate park without a doubt is the best one in the community, without a doubt. Um and so we've always talked about doing a concrete bowl, uh kind of like what Andrew showed. Um and this is the perfect opportunity to uh utilize a lot of the same features that are there. Because a lot of those are in really good shape, but to add some concrete features and really increase um what we have there. That is a great amenity that is well used. You can go on any nice day and there's multiple people. I've gone over at at nine in the morning. There's people. At three o'clock in the afternoon, these are during the week, um it's being utilized. Um a couple, I think it was in January, there was a guy there with a shovel. He was actually clearing snow so that he could use some of the um equipment. Which was awesome when I committed him for that. Um so that's, that's why the skate park is part of this project, because where uh it is now will be a parking lot. Uh expansion. So we're just tweaking it just a little bit farther up um and putting it back better than it was.
Is that, is that it? Uh Jeff, do you have something else?
I just had the uh the the basket, the question on the basketball courts, if there's going to be a period of time where there won't be any basketball courts.
Unfortunately, that's correct. So the basketball courts are where the detention basin will need to go. Um it's the low point of the entire park, along with the uh the uh older playground that's there. So that's where the detention basin is going to go since that's the low point. But we do plan to put the basketball courts back in. Uh moreover, to the um east. Uh so that's future to put those back in and that's something as as fund becomes available, we have the capacity as a staff to do some of that work. At a lower cost. Uh we knew it could not be part of this project right now.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh next is Councilmember Milowambe.
Yes, thank you. Uh thank you, Jay and Andrew, for uh not only a great presentation, but uh. Uh a lot of the, a lot of work that you that you did. Uh also want to thank uh Tim as well. Uh because I know when you first came into the community, uh this was one of the challenges that was presented to you. And here we are uh with an opportunity to consider a a wonderful project. Um I I would say, you know, I mean, one of the 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 interesting things about um going almost last. Is that everything has almost been said, but I'm going to try to provide some comments that might uh be a little bit different. First, I want to highlight the fact that um we did talk about if we're going to make this project work, it had to be unique. Within the community and and that is something that I I definitely appreciate to see some unique aspects to it. So we're not replicating something that's already available. Um I also want to say that it's um. I am, I'm very excited uh about the fact that this is happening on the west side. I think it's going to be a great morale booster. For uh folks um in uh in that area, uh something that they've looked forward to for a very long time. It shows that we we do value uh them and we value that area of the community as well. Uh one concern that I do have is uh, you know, the the financial accessibility. As Alderwoman Painter uh mentioned initially, uh so I'm glad that we we mentioned uh the the possibility. To uh to price it differently for people who are outside of the community or not our taxpayers. Um but I do also want to highlight um or maybe emphasize the the fundraising aspect. Uh of things, I think with amenities like this have a a a the potential to get people very excited. And 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 these are the kinds of projects that people can support. So I I would go even beyond with fundraising. Rather than just raising fun and expanding them, but looking to to put together endowment so that it can keep paying. Uh for for itself and providing funds, you know, over over time. So we, I think we need to think about that. Um I think we also need to think about uh, you know, programming and and revenue raising. You know, I was reading some articles about uh uh, you know, facilities like this and the the opportunities that it provides. You know, if you're very creative, you can find ways to raise revenue uh in many different ways with different activities and and things like that. So that that's something that we definitely should consider. Uh another thing too is uh looking into. And I know you didn't get a chance to talk about this and maybe you you have, I'm sure you have considered it, but energy cost savings. Uh in terms of the operation of the pool, um yeah, those are things, you know, I I read things about, you know, using solar panels. Uh but also uh using, you know, a retractable or roof, you know, to to cover the pool. Uh so that uh, you know, to to manage temperatures, uh that's another way that you can save money there. Um and the the last thing that I I wanted to to mention, so I'd like you to comment on the energy cost savings if if you could. Um and then for uh City Manager Gleason, I I do know we had introduced the capital funding request for O'Neill Pool. Uh which um I was not granted, uh you know, this latest round, but I. I'm just kind of wondering about, you know, the prospects in the future. I know the the state is not, you know, exactly doing the best. In terms of uh finances, but I just wanted to know what the prospects are for the future.
So uh the first question is generally is is on energy costs and I'm, uh I suspect that's nothing new to Mr. Caputo. Um do you have some comments on that?
Yeah, that's an, that's a, that's a goal and something that we want to be mindful of as architects and engineers on on every project. So it's a great, you know, comment to ask us about and um energy costs are are um always something in mind. Because you have the expenditure, of course, of the upfront capital to build the facility, right? And then you have the expenses to operate them, right? And so um sometimes those two processes, right, are are in tension with each other and that's part of what we do during the design process. Is try to uh discuss those qualities of certain building systems with staff. So that as they're making decisions on what we specify and what we include in the design for the project. Of, you know, where is, you know, is the, is the lowest upfront cost the objective? You know, or no, is is the, is the objective to uh reach the the lowest possible operating cost? Which me, which oftentimes means a a higher upfront cost. So in in again, in today's world, what is it? It's it's a balance. So we want to work with staff as we go through the project. Um as you might imagine, um these newer aquatic facilities. Are going to be much more uh water uh and energy efficient than any facilities that were built in the past. And the new um pool equipment and the mechanical systems that are part of this project, uh you know, will be. Among the the latest um in the industries. Um specifically with with respect to solar power. Uh which I'll just touch on in a moment. Um we've done uh some uh solar panels uh with some uh other clients of ours. Um solar panel costs are coming down um in in recent years and decades. Um for a commercial project, um sometimes the costs are not down far enough. Where they're not necessarily something we would recommend without a grant. Um but we have worked with other clients in the past where there have been uh some opportunities for utilities to provide grants. That might assist with funding um so solar panels on the roof that might, you know, supplement the building power. So that is something we can explore and look at and then, you know, staff can make a decision as to say, you know, yes, we we would like you to design the solar panels. And pursue the grant opportunities or or not.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I very much like that.
Mr. Gleason?
A question to uh me from Alderman Milowambe was about uh funding. Uh this was a capital project request uh that we made to our state delegation. Actually, uh under my, uh your timing's perfect. Under my city manager comments, uh I've got some exciting news uh that could be applied to this project. Uh but also, uh this is a an ongoing uh desire of ours to find alternative funding. Uh I think Representative Dan Brady uh, you know, was a lifeguard at O'Neill Pool. So I know that he's passionate about this as well. So yes, uh we are pursuing uh this very same process in the past. And new funding opportunities.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, uh Councilmember Matthew, last but not least.
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, it looks like Donna just raised her hand after me, just so you know.
Oh.
Uh and and I was, I was, I I was, I'm stuck with this image of uh. Uh Representative Dan Brady in the the single piece suit uh from back in the, you know, I I don't know, I'll stop right there with that one, so. You know, my first thought I had written down, my first comment was also kind of funny because uh with, you know, the. Talking about the rest of the presentation before we got to the pool, you put up the picture of that uh Jabrazza monkey and I was. It it immediately struck me that I had a drill instructor in the army that had the exact same haircut as that monkey did, so. Um you know, just as, just aside there. Um so my first question, and I've I've got a list of of things. I was jotting down notes on was um Jay, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we just put a park in in partnership with Sheridan Elementary? Like two years ago, I couldn't picture on the the layout of the park where that playground was for that. That we did with Sheridan.
So that that playground has been installed and it is uh to the east of where we're talking right now. So east of the current skate park and east of the future skate park. Um it's pretty close to the uh baseball field. Uh it would be the first pace, first base dugout and bullpen area.
Okay, okay, so that's going to stay, right? Because I know the school was super excited when we we worked with them, that partnership to make that. Get that done. Okay, uh I just had a note on here that I'm happy that we're putting in diving boards. Because uh believe it or not, even as a redhead, I spent a significant amount of time at the pool as a kid. And the diving boards were our favorite hangout and uh many a belly flop did happen, but uh, you know, it never stopped us from going back. For more as we went along. Uh I also had a note on solar panels. Uh thank you for bringing that up in Boca. Uh my thought was that even if we can't get a grant to do it right now, I would like us to put in. We eat empty conduit or stub outs or whatever we need to do to prepare for those in the future. Um I think that that's important. Uh you know, we could, uh like you were saying, that um the price of solar panels coming down significantly. And uh like if you can't do it right now and we can add them later, if we prepare for that in the design process right now, we can save a lot of money. Uh in the future, way easier to put empty conduit in when the walls are all open than it is to open the walls up later. And and even taking that a step further, uh I was, last year before the shutdown, I was um in Denver. And they had several parking lots where they had built car shades for the cars to park under. And they were just row after row of solar panels. So, you know, we've got the the landscaped islands right now that are in the parking lot. Those could have against stub outs put there to receive um future add-ons of solar panels there. We could turn the entire parking lot into electricity generation to power the entire park. So. Um I I would be, I'd be very much in favor of spending a little money now, like Andrew, you were saying, spend the money now. To make the preparations for what we think the future holds in in some regards there. Um Jay, something you and I have talked about before in the past, uh pollinator gardens, uh Julie mentioned that. Um I am personally a person, and and it's probably since I'm actually allergic to grass, but I don't really see a whole. Lot of pointy huge tracts of grass, especially in those little subdivided parts where you. You know, you don't have the big areas to play frisbee or football or whatever on those little areas. I would rather see those all turned into pollinator gardens. Or something that's um more sustainable, prairie grass, whatever that looks like, but uh um I hate. The idea, I hate how much money we spend on mowing grass. I'm growing grass and mowing grass. That's the constant source of irritation for me. So and then my last uh kind of thought for right now is if there was one area of this whole plan. That I could live without, it's the batting cages. Um I know it's a cool little amenity, but we already have batting cages in town. And I can't imagine there's that much demand for batting cages that it's something we need to, you know, rebuild what already exists, so. Um just some thoughts. Oh, and I I like the idea of the pool having the big giant uh sail covers over the top of it. Goes back to the redheaded part of me again, so. So otherwise, uh very excited on this whole project, you know, I I guess we're going to have to live without a wave pool, but. Um you know, we did manage to work in a whole bunch of other really cool features for the community. And uh like everybody said, and you know, great work. Thank you for all the hard work on this. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Uh and now, last but not least, uh Councilmember Bowlin.
Well, some people may want to come back and add extra comments, but um I'm always the fiscal conservative. I'm always looking at um the cost of maintenance, um the cost of staffing. Uh depreciation over time. So I always would like to focus on, not focus on that, but take that into consideration. I'm very happy with uh including the accessibility and to um. Alderman Emig's point, I think that those uh bathrooms that are open are also can be used. For uh those maybe in wheelchairs or that have special um handicaps of some sort. So I think that those are valuable. Um now, when I watched the presentation that was put online a way back. The, a question was asked about capacity and I think the answer was there's seven hundred or seven hundred people. Can use the pool. Um personally, I would like to see the footprint smaller. Because unlike Jamie, I like a little more green space that can be used year round. Um rather than just the three months and um. Again, with parking, if the capacity is seven hundred and fifty people. Then there's going to have to be a lot of um asphalt and I'm not a fan of lots of asphalt in a park. Um the last thing, I sound like such a negative person, but I'm not. The last thing I would like to bring forward or two of the things I'd like to bring forward is that uh our largest employer. Has a um a park with a pool and so they are pretty much likely not to use this. Particular um O'Neill Pool complex. And just recently, Decatur put in a splash park, very similar to this. So as far as the economic impact of this particular facility, we now have some competition. In a, in the area. Um I don't view this as an economic driver. I view this as something for the um specifically for the west side, actually. Um. So I don't really think the footprint needs to be as big as its presented. That's just where I'm coming from. The amenities, yes, keep the amenities the best you can, but I don't, I don't like the very, very large footprint.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. Um just if I could summarize, I think uh what our staff needed. Was to have direction moving forward. Many of the things that have been mentioned, I I haven't heard any contrary voices of of uh. Any of us, of the ten of us, but there are certainly concerns and things like, obviously, as Alderwoman Bowlin has mentioned. Maintenance, staffing, costs and many other considerations that are going forward. These are clearly things that uh. Uh Jay and Tim and Billy, Andrew Caputo and others will be continually working with and interacting, not just with staff. But with us as this this unfolds. Um but within those parameters. Um is and and I'm I'm trying to give sort of a a five hundred foot summary here. Because we are uh well. because we are well over 100% over budget in our time. We don't want to be that, you know, over budget as we go forward. But is that accurate, is that an accurate statement? That does, are we good with letting staff move forward with this? And then perhaps Mr. Gleason respond to some some issues with follow-up memos? And then obviously, this thing, as it unfolds, if we have to make even more or if we have to make cuts in the in the project, where would they be? Would they be in bathroom areas? Would they be in some of other facilities that are adjacent to this? Is there anybody disagree with that? Tim, do you have the direction you think you need from our council?
Mayor, I see Alderman Matthews' hand is up.
Oh, okay. Jamie, if, go ahead.
I think, gosh, and I don't remember who said it, but somebody had asked for maybe a few options, right? I mean, we we know what a total staff recommended solution looks like. And Tim, you had mentioned you didn't necessarily want to give a menu. But, you know, if staff made some recommendations, like, you know, it would probably be worthwhile to hear what it looks like. To get back to that original 10.5 number that we talked about. You know, what does that, what does that mean? You know, it's hard to know without being able to visualize what the individual pieces floating around look like, where we're at on that. So I, for one, would like to know what what that looks like. If we if we said we wanted back to that 10.5 we were talking about last year, what does that take out of the plan?
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that we've got a staff recommendation or staff presentation here this evening. What would it look like if we made certain changes? Mr. Gleason, is that you understand and get that can respond to us?
And and if we made those changes at the same time, it would be handy to know how that affects, you know, like the bond financing, right? If we're asking to cut somebody, something out that only makes a difference of, you know, a couple thousand dollars in the the annual bond financing, you know, how does that make people feel differently about it versus, you know, it seems like when you talk about, you know, this is a million dollars. Well, a million dollars chopped up and financed over 20 years is this much of a payment as we're trying to think about long-term city budgeting. You know, it'd be good to know to see both what the cost was and what that effect on the bond payment would be as well to.
Absolutely. And then, again, that, we probably aren't going to go back to the wave pool concept, though, Jamie. That would have costs, but certainly, but even if you're talking about it, let's say a 10% decrease, if the if the bond payment is whatever, a million dollars a year, then a 10% decrease, if it was 10%, if we were saving 10%, making 10% cuts, that'd be about $100,000 a year. What would that actually mean? That'd be a little over a buck for everybody who lives in Bloomington, of the 80,000 people.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
So those are the kinds of things. Are you good with that, Tim? You you got, I think we got a nod there. Okay. So at this point, I want to thank once again, everybody. This is absolutely an exciting project. I will definitely contact Alderman or former Alderman Scott Black as we go forward. Donna, if you have something, it has to be really quick because, as I say, we're way over in time. Go ahead, Donna. Donna, you're muted.
The quick question is, what is the longevity longevity of the pool? And what is the bond length? Is it for 30 years, 15 years?
That's good. Aren't they usually around 2025 in terms of the the length? I don't know whether this goes to Jay, I guess.
All of Andrew give us what his.
Andrew, okay, okay.
You're muted.
Andrew, you're muted. Andrew?
There we go. Thanks, everyone. So the, an aquatic park is is one that has a certain life expectancy to it. And, you know, depending on the construction and the materials and, you know, the length of many decades of weather, you you can expect a facility to last about 30 years without a major renovation. Have we seen facilities that are older than that? Sure. But at that 30-year mark, they typically need some some work. Where you'd be doing some concrete replacements, some patching, replacing equipment, redoing some piping. You get you get close to kind of that decision at 35 years, whether you want to keep the facility or or start over. Facilities nowadays, they tend to last longer than they used to, obviously, because we're building with stronger engineered materials as opposed to the past. But basically, the rule of thumb we usually like to say is it's about, it's about a 30-year life expectancy before a major renovation.
And we have, we have seen one. In fact, you've worked on one. Our current O'Neill Pool is what, nearly 50 years old? So.
And then, and then what, what is the bond plan? Is it a 30-year bond?
Tim, or whoever, I don't know whoever wants to.
We have options.
So it could be, it could be what, 20 to 30 possibly, 2025, to be a little conservative? Could be, okay. Okay. And so, by the way, the million dollar a year payment that I mentioned was just for illustrative purposes. I didn't necessarily assume that because obviously, if you go, if we do a million dollars a year, it's, and we took it out to 25 years, that's $25 million, which is not, you know, plus a little bit of interest costs, which are not that substantial, given the interest rates and our bond rating. But it could probably be more like a little more than half that, 600, 700, 800,000, I'm guessing. But anyway, anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Gleason?
Real quick, Mayor, what I'm going to do, I'm going to do two things. Going to provide bond payment over 20, 25, 30 years at 11.7 million. And I'm going to do a bond payment at 10.5 million over 20, 25, 30 years. And then also, I'm going to provide that menu of reductions, trim about 1.2 million dollars off of the project. You guys will see that in email tomorrow morning and then possibly ask for a quick turnaround on responses. And we'll see if I do get that input. No rush. But if I get that input, this could still be an agenda item for next Monday night.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Once again, thank you, everybody that's been involved. And many of us have, you know, been working on this or involved in this since even before Mr. Gleason came. So we're very happy that this is happening. And I will, as I say, I'll let, or if you, maybe the rest of you talk to Scott Black in the meantime, we'll let him know that at least we've we've moved to a next step. At this point, Mr. Gleason, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Phil, if you would, put the first slide up, please. And April 1st, Friday, can you find a golden egg? April 2nd, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Next slide. Bunny's birthday, March 27th, 1 to 3 at Miller Park Zoo. And then also Miller Park Zoo Spring Break Safari. Safari camp ages 6 to 11. That's March 22nd, 23rd. That's actually something that Jay talked about, his idea to just add a quick overview of what's going on with parks and recreation. So that was the first half dozen or so slides that we saw before the presentation tonight. So we're trying to find a way to still provide these kinds of programs to the community. So I appreciate that effort on the part of Jay and his staff. Next slide, Phil. Easter in a Box, ages 4 through 12. This is Sunday, March 28th, and it's at the Miller Park Pavilion. And then also, visit from the Easter Bunny for ages 2 and over, March 30th and 31st. So again, great programs for the community. Please take advantage of those. Next slide on the new employees. We've got two, Chanel Holland, Parking Crew Leader Supervisor, hired in Russ Waller's Department of Facilities. And then Jack Yoder has been hired to fill in HR Generalist position in Nicole's Department for HR. So welcome aboard to both of them. And then I did have a couple of extra comments. I wanted to let everybody know that the fire recruitment, the fire chief recruitment came down this past Friday, March 12th. We had 33 applicants. All were qualified from 15 different states. And then we have three internal candidates and we'll trim those and start the interview process in about a week and a half. I wanted to provide that update. And then I mentioned during the O'Neill Pool presentation, some exciting news. It's probably been about a year ago when I shared to this council and the community that we have 3.5 million dollars captured, allotted to the city of Bloomington. And that doesn't happen to communities around the state. This is thanks to the efforts of this elected body. It's thanks to the state delegation that we have representing the city of Bloomington. But there's 3.5 million dollars in the state budget, the current state budget. Now, the real trick, if you will, is to make sure that, you know, we're able to get the 3.5 million dollars, see how the state is going to decide how those will be administered. And I am very pleased to announce that 1.45 million dollars of that is been allotted, which means that we have the responsibility to complete grants that will go to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And some decisions need to be made with the state delegation. So Senator Jason Birkman, I've already talked to him. Boundaries for him do not matter, as long as it's money that he was responsible for, can be used for the good in the community. These are typically infrastructure type of grants. Representative Dan Brady, a large portion can be attributed to him. Very much is taking care of us here at the city of Bloomington. Senator Bill Brady outgoing, and then now Senator Sally Turner's responsible for a portion of these grants. And then Representative Keith Summer, last fall, his was actually the first grant that we successfully have submitted a grant and a project for an intersection, intersection improvement at Wiley Drive and Maple Hill Road. And that was last fall to the tune of about $200,000. So 1.45 million dollars, we have work to do to figure out where these projects will be. But quite exciting. And many thanks to the four of our state delegation for taking care of us at the city of Bloomington. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you so much again, Mr. Gleason. We very much appreciate that. And thank you, Madam Clerk. I haven't thanked you this evening. Certainly appreciate everything. At this point, is there a motion to approve, to approve, to adjourn? I'm sorry. Moved by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Mill Wambway. All in favor signify by saying aye.